Welcome to the January 27, 2020, Parma School Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call Susan Musio.
This is President.
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 President. Mr. Dr. Smiley, could you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Could you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there is a problem, please speak up immediately so the technical difficulty can be...
I will be so be able to do that.
Thank you, sir. Bring the information to the board, Dr. Smiley.
A couple items for me, and then Mr. Hoon is here with his distinguished team for his presentation. But first, on Building Our Future, I'm grateful for the board's time this afternoon. We've started actually at 4:15. A great work session. We appreciate your comments, your questions. We take those comments, we take those questions, and use them to make us better for next week, so we appreciate the constructive feedback. Next week, we start round two of our Building Our Future meeting. We did have some folks that did not come to the first round of meetings that signed up, so we're hopeful to see you in the second round. If you still want to join, please reach out as well. We're happy to catch you up, and then give you the presentation for the first round so that you're ready to go. Again, our goal is to educate folks, not just sort of ask opinions. Do the best we can to give as much information, nuts and bolts, dollars and cents, enrollment figures, and vision pieces for curriculum instruction, and extracurricular opportunities, so that we can eventually come to a consensus for plans to re-envision our district. So that's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of next week. I also want to say that we had a pretty significant announcement from the Ohio Department of Health this week. They have actually dramatically relaxed the contact tracing that we have been so inundated in. Mrs. Mueller and her team certainly have dedicated a lifetime, I'm sure it seems like, to making sure that folks have the right notifications and that we were tracking down students that sat close to each other. Really has been quite a task for our administrative team, quite a task for our nursing team. The relaxation of guidelines has really significantly changed. We now only will contact trace if the Board of Health notifies us that there's some type of outbreak, and we'll certainly help them as much as possible, but the actual requirements, due to on an individual basis, is now gone. That said, the next question would be, what about the masks? Our numbers are low, and I want to be very honest about that. I think we have eight students right now, three staff members in the district. However, we continually want to watch data. We typically use board meetings to sort of benchmarks. We'd like to see a couple more weeks of these low numbers, and if the next board meeting potentially has an announcement about masks. But for right now, our mask policy will stay in place. We hope that, again, it continues to trend in the way that we have seen, but we are potentially relaxed now. With those things said, Mr. Hoon is here, and we're excited for him to present his goals and his work in his department. I will say before he starts, we are lucky to have Mr. Hoon. This is an extremely difficult position to fill. It is the classic conundrum and balance between leadership and management. You have management concerns as a Director of Exceptional Children in your face on an every minute-to-minute basis, and yet, we also ask Mr. Hoon and trust him to lead and make things better, and help his people to grow in their performance. So it's a very difficult job, and we're very lucky to have Mr. Hoon, and I'm sure after this presentation, you'll understand why.
Hey, Hoon.
Good evening. Thanks, first and foremost, Dr. Smiley for the warm introduction, and the board for the opportunity for not just myself, but all of the senior leadership team to speak and present, and really truly celebrate the accomplishments that we've had over the last calendar year, but then also looking ahead to the second half of this year and frankly into next year. Full disclosure, as I was creating this presentation and taking some photos off of my Twitter feed that I use for work, I realized I take a lot of selfies with kids, so it's not what it is. But, you know, as always, we always start our presentations with our district goals. A lot of the things that I'm going to talk with you about and share with you tonight are increasing student achievement. For all of the different domains that operate under the Office of Exceptional Students, student achievement is always first and foremost the pinnacle goal of the three. Transparency is certainly just as relevant, and then fiscal responsibility. We'll get into some pretty significant numbers towards the end of the presentation as it relates to fiscal responsibility. But again, first and foremost, we're looking at increasing student achievement as a primary factor. When Mrs. Strabko presented back in December, she presented the playbook that we all use for instructional practices. This is absolutely 100% just as relevant in the Office of Exceptional Students as it is in literally any other classroom across the district. It is my expectation, it's my staff expectation, that there is consistency with all of our practices and procedures throughout this district. So that is not exclusive, there's no exclusionary factors in terms of the departments that only headquarters of all in our mind. Along the same lines, the Resilient Learners playbook. I'm not going to go into the specifics of this. We talked a lot about it with the board in previous meetings, but there are some specifics that I'm going to share with you in a moment that directly align with the implementation of this playbook, and it's probably one of the more exciting things for me personally that we've done over the last few years, so I will make a connection to that here in just a moment. One of the things that I realized three years ago when I took this position as the Director of Exceptional Students, no one really knows what that means. So the exceptional students categories, the areas that fall under this department, the large one is certainly special education. That is a significant part of our population that we have here in Parma. We have the luxury of being a very large district, and we have an incredibly phenomenal group of diverse learners, both special education, but then also English learners. Our communities are increasingly diversifying. We are increasingly seeing these numbers increase. Response to intervention in multi-tiered systems, this is kind of just before we would get to a special education people. What are those interventions that we're doing? Are we seeing one of our students are struggling behaviorally? We see our students are struggling academically. What are we doing to truly exhaust all of our options that we have to make sure we're supporting our students? First Step Preschool and Aces Center for Education are two of our more unique programs that we offer in Parma. I'm going to talk at length about both of those programs here in a moment. But I also wanted to single out, as Dr. Smiley led at the beginning, district nursing. Certainly, three years ago, district nursing was... Oh, great, Christina Mueller's here. The amount of time that Christina Mueller spends working and supporting of this district and our students and our community is absolutely phenomenal. And I know that we've talked a lot about this over the last several years as we enter the third year of the pandemic, but Christina and Jen Ballhinder and Carol Naitland are the three district nurse supervisors, and truly, this district is a better district because of their leadership and because of their dedication to our students. So publicly, Christina, thank you for all that you do for our students and our community because you are incredible. Direct reports, there are a handful of folks that are here tonight for this board meeting. Christina Mueller is our district nurse supervisor. We have Laura Savillik, who is our early childhood coordinator and preschool principal. I have Caitlin Sabo here, who is the Director of Aces Center for Education. Sue Garcia is our elementary special education supervisor, and Megan McTaskey is also here, who is our secondary special education supervisor. I will tell you that while my name might be at the top of the list or at the top of the website, nothing gets done without these folks. I am a better person, I'm a better leader, we are a better district because of the dedication of these individuals that are up here. So I don't want to slight the other folks who aren't here. I'm sure a lot of you have probably crossed paths with some of them, but they are absolutely incredible assets for our community and for our district and the departments that we operate under. Over the last couple of years, we've also added positions that are called Board Certified Behavior Analysts. We kind of simplify them and call them Behavior Specialists because Board Certified Behavior Analyst doesn't exactly roll off the tongue. And this has been a significant investment on behalf of the district for Dr. Smiley, Dr. Scheier, Mrs. Strabko, and myself, because more so than ever, as we navigate, again, this pandemic that we are still enduring, our students are coming with more differences and more challenges than we've ever experienced before. And these seven individuals are uniquely certified, are uniquely trained, and they are uniquely skilled at working with some of our more challenging behaviors, but also going in and working through to see even some of the lesser behaviors. So why is this student disengaged? What can we do environmentally to make that classroom a more successful experience for the students? So these folks, we have them specifically and intentionally assigned to different buildings and facilities depending on the level of need, but also playing into their skill set as well. Some of the highlights that we have in terms of student achievement from the 21-22 school year, last year was our first year for Aces Center for Education. We currently operate with 14 students across three classrooms, grades kindergarten through sixth grade. This is considered a separate public facility for students with autism. It is located in a separate area of Parma Senior High School, along with our PACS transitional program for students who are ages 18 through 22. First Step Preschool, nothing would have been done with last year in terms of the focus and the time spent at First Step Preschool without the leadership of Mrs. Savillik, but probably more significantly, the leadership of her building leadership team. That group of professionals, I've never met a group that is so incredibly dedicated to their craft, and that is complete honesty because my career was always spent in secondary. So I was going in completely blind, and they brought me along slowly, and I appreciated that, but the building has changed dramatically in the sense that we have a curriculum adoption that the board adopted for our youngest learners to help set the stage for their school success related on school age students. We restructured the building into pods so that we can create a sense of community for our students when they transition to kindergarten. No matter who the student is, no matter what the district is, kindergarten transition is a challenge both for parents, but also for the students. We want to try to level that out a little bit so that it's a little bit more manageable and frankly, less scary for our youngest kiddos. We've also added STEM and maker space, as well as an art program, to the preschool this year. Those are very exciting additions to the program, and I know that the students just being down there and working with them in those classrooms and in those settings, it is just an added gem to their experience at First Step. Program adoption, we have adopted more than 10 research-based intervention programs over the last year. These are all programs that can be used both in classrooms and blended learning, so this would be applicable for students who are also enrolled in PBLA. We do have students with disabilities who are currently enrolled in that program. We have also adopted curricular support and program for English learners, and that is an ongoing process. So we have a fairly large English learner population, or English as a second language, and we are constantly trying to figure out ways to be innovative and individualize their English language acquisition. And then finally, the behavior support with the leadership of our BCBAs. We have increased student support for the first semester of this school year, just to give a snapshot. We have conducted 105 functional behavior assessments. And a functional behavior assessment is not necessarily a bad thing, but it is a very rigorous set of assessments from observations to parent interviews to teacher interviews and a variety of different criteria to determine the function of a child's behavior. Why is this behavior occurring? So that we can put interventions and supports in place to mitigate the behavior so that they can get back to learning to the best of their ability. That is not, I should also note, that is not exclusively a student with disabilities thing. These seven behavior specialists work with any student regardless of whether or not they have a disability. They have also led social and emotional learning lessons for our staff, as well as professional development staff, both certified as well as classified throughout the school year. In terms for Aces Center for Education, the A in Aces stands for Accept. Again, it currently has 14 students across three classrooms. We divide that by grade, so students are grouped by their grade level, and the classroom focus is truly primarily based in developmental functional foundation that is highly, highly individualized for the students' learning needs as determined by the school team. Behavior and/or academic, these are students who are probably on the extended standards, who are focusing on their individual learning progression. The C in Aces stands for Champion, and this is probably one of the more unique pieces because this is considered a separate facility within a public school district. These are some things that frankly, no other facility can offer in northeastern Ohio. So these students have the opportunity to be with their typical peers throughout their week. So while we know that their needs may be intensive, and we do need to have a highly structured and highly individualized environment, our high school students who are in the Career and Technical Program for Teaching professions come down at least once a week, and we're looking to increase that, to work and mentor our students in Aces. And that is fantastic on both sides. So it's great for our younger students to have that peer connection to a high school student, but frankly, it's just as good for the students in the teaching professions that have that unique opportunity to work in a field that they are very interested in. And there are career and technical programs across the state of Ohio and in the general area, but there's nothing quite like the opportunities that our students in teaching professions have when they're working with our Aces students. Our middle school age students also travel to Shiloh, and they participate in a Helping Hands group, which is a social group with their typical peers. They travel over there by bus once a week, and then our younger students travel to Perro Park. They travel there for lunch, and they travel there for recess for increased socialization opportunities with their peers as well. So looking at the Champion piece, I don't want to read the verbatim or anything, but these are a couple of quotes that were provided to us from both a student in teaching professions and then also a parent of a student who has enrolled in Aces. And just the part that jumped out for me, and again, I'm not going to read the verbatim, but "Going down there is truly the highlight of my week, and I would love to continue going down there to work with kids." Like, as a teacher, as an educator, that truly gives me goosebumps to know that that experience for that high school student is that valuable that they look forward to that time with our kids. And then secondly, from one of our parents, "I believe that Aces is a program that the district should be very proud of. I do not understand what it means to a parent that has a child on the spectrum to have a safe place to attend school." Knowing a lot of the parents of the students who are enrolled in that program, I don't want to speak for them, I certainly don't want to make any assumptions about their feelings, but I do know that the families have had positive experiences and have positive things to say from my conversations with them. The E in Aces stands for Educate. All of our staff members, certified or classified, are trained in crisis prevention, so those are de-escalation strategies. This is an ongoing process for our staff to make sure that this is constantly trained and retrained as needed. Our special education assistants have completed, and are currently certified, a registered behavior technician, which is an additional certification for their professional careers, but also a unique certification to work with the population of Aces. And then finally, the teachers at Aces are implementing Equals Math, which is a research-based multi-sensory math curriculum. This is a program that we're trialing in Aces this year, monitoring the data to see if it is working well for our students, and it may well, if successful, expand to some of our other buildings across the district. First Step Preschool through the leadership of Mrs. Savillik and again, her building leadership team. The building leadership team designed and came up with the structure for the pods. This supports a smooth transition into kindergarten. The preschoolers are grouped by their neighborhood peers, so students who attend Parma Park Elementary are with Parma Park Elementary students, so when they travel to kindergarten, there will be familiar faces. This also allows for a natural collaboration with staff. So no more... One of the things that I never want any of our staff members to feel is that they're working in isolation from their colleagues. That is no way for a professional educator to have to work. So every week, our teachers, our related service providers, our classroom assistants are collaborating and talking through, troubleshooting things with kids, making sure that we are putting the best educational program forward for our students at First Step. And then finally, vertical and horizontal collaboration, this is going to allow us the opportunity to have, we would call it vertical collaboration, but for the preschool teachers to collaborate with their elementary colleagues, again, to ease that transition to school age in their kindergarten. The board adopted Creative Curriculum, which is the current curriculum that we are using at First Step. There are specific units of study that are really great fun. They've currently completed clothing units, trees, buildings. All of the classroom environments are set up in the exact same way. I mean, they have their unique nature, but they all have the required centers that are set forth from the Ohio Department of Education. It aligns with our curriculum, and it also aligns with our instructional playbook. Some additional additions that we've had at First Step, we have a behavior specialist who is assigned to the building to work with the social and emotional students. One of the things that has stuck with me that Mrs. Strabko shared, and I believe a December board made a move before that, the students who are currently involved at Pleasant View First Step have never experienced student life without living through a pandemic. They've never experienced school without a pandemic and social distancing and masking and some of these other things. And I'm not saying that that is what it is, but we also know that the needs of our students have changed from where they were three years ago, and it's our responsibility, it's my responsibility to make sure that we are adjusting to that change. The continuum of services in preschool, which is a requirement, we have itinerant services, we have center-based, and we've added a structured teaching unit, which is a day-long unit in the preschool that provides intensive instruction for students with significant disabilities. And then finally, we again have added the art program, STEM lab, a closet motor room, and a sensory room to the building. Some comments here just from some parents, as well as the PTA president. Again, I'm not going to read these verbatim, but the one that stuck out with me was that First Step Preschool is truly a gem that the citizens gave us, Ray. I couldn't agree more. And the folks who work down there are passionate and dedicated to a level that I have never seen before, and they truly care deeply about our youngest kiddo. Practicing fiscal responsibility, some highlights with federal funds, we have purchased those intervention programs through Title Federal Funds. We have new individualized curriculum for English learners to help expedite their English language acquisition. We have updated sensory rooms across 10 different buildings. That is my goal for the end of the year, to make every building have a sensory room that meets the needs of their students, and then the First Step Preschool updates as well. From the federal stimulus money that was related to the pandemic, we have professional development stipendants for our staff, as well as the First Step Art Program, student wellness, board certified behavior analysts, and tier two and three programming. And then one other side note, in the last two and a half years, this district, in August of 2019, outplayed 91 students. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I want to say that that was somewhere around $3.4 million that we paid other facilities to educate our children. Now, if I as a director say that I am going to recommend an outplay for a child, I am telling a parent that I as the second largest district in this county am incapable of educating their child. That is never a conversation that I want to have with a mother. There is no reason why we don't. In the last year, two and a half years, we are now down to 46 students who are outplayed, which is more than 50% from August of 2019. We have a net savings of $1.7 million in that amount of time. Moving forward, the goal that I have for myself and my department, first, we are creating and facilitating with staff members a mock IDEA monitoring process. What that is, is a mock audit. The state of Ohio will go into school districts with some regularity and conduct an audit of their special education programming for compliance review, instructional review, and things like that. What I do not want our district to have to endure is a blindsided knock on our door from the Ohio Department of Education when we're caught off guard. There's no reason for it. We have the exact criteria that they would come in and do. So what this is going to do the second half of this year, we are going to create and conduct our own mock audit so that we can have a targeted plan for improving our practices, whatever that may be, so that when they do come, we can say with pride that we have an incredible special education program, and we've already corrected whatever errors there may not be out there. The action steps are there. I am proud to say that we have more than 15 staff members, teachers, psychologists, related service providers who have volunteered to sign up for this, which is incredibly powerful because our teachers, our staff are dedicating their own time to continue to improve the education of our students. The second goal for myself, as well as my staff, is to provide ongoing professional development for our co-teaching teachers, so general education teacher, a regular individual specialist, as well as our behavior units, to make sure that we are constantly refining and reviewing our instructional practices. We have our principals going through and walking through classrooms every single day in this district. I want to make sure that there is no difference in the educational program that is being offered in these units than what AP Calculus is getting, to be very frank. Obviously, this is a significant part of our special education population. Most of our students with disabilities are in a co-teaching setting, so this is not something that is going to be green. This is something that is going to be an ongoing process to support our teachers in refining their craft. And then lastly, the priorities for 2021 and 22. First and foremost, along with what Mrs. Strabko shared in her presentation, is program sustainability. Whatever we have adopted and added, we want to make sure that we can sustain it beyond these two years, that we have extra funds or merit back or whatever else. The compliance IDA monitoring process, that is a significant undertaking, so that is something that we are going to continue to work toward. The integration of all of our instructional strategies, as I said at the beginning, it is my expectation that our instructional playbook is happening in every single special education and English learning classroom in this district. EL program review, professional development for our support staff and teachers, visibility, myself and my staff being visible and doing walkthroughs and visiting buildings, and then finally, continuing to strengthen relationships with myself, with my fellow administrators, our teachers, and then just as significantly, our support staff and classified staff. So that is the end of the presentation. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to clarify or answer any questions you guys may have.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment for you. As I... You know, I'm pretty sure that I'm speaking for the rest of us up here, but I am extremely proud of your work and your leadership with this Office of Exceptional Students. I mean, you have done tremendous leaps and bounds since the first time we started, you know, you got on the board five years ago or so, four years ago?
You're having fun.
Yeah, so you get that. But I'm telling you what, as I listen to you present, I can see how proud we are of your staff, and you should be. And I see your professionalism, and I see your passion for this job that you're doing. And for that, I thank you, and we are very, very fortunate to have you on staff. And wherever we nabbed you from, I'm going to send them a thank you card. It's awesome. The ladies, kudos to all of you as well, and the hard work that you're putting in with them. We're lucky to have you as well. I think you've done a fabulous job with this department. Thank you. I have no questions. Anybody else?
I don't know. I do want to compliment you on, so often, when we talk about placing students out of district, we focus on that financial piece, but that 50% decrease in students that are outplayed, students that get to live and learn in their own community is huge, and I am incredibly proud of all of those efforts. And I know that we have reached guidance in and out of the Office of Exceptional Students to make sure that our students stay here, and that is one of the most, kind of, I guess, rewarding things for me to see, is that our kids are still here. And then, as a board, we made a very difficult decision a couple years, a year and a half ago, to close the big year. Was it that year?
That's right.
To see the amazing results of what was, at the time, a very controversial vote to some people, like, to see what you guys have been able to do with that just reinforces my argument that we have the best staff anywhere, hands down, and I am incredibly grateful.
I just had a quick comment. I had the opportunity to go tour Aces earlier this week, and it's pretty amazing. People haven't been there, go check it out. I was telling Dr. Smiley, I have friends that have children with autism, and I guarantee you that if they saw that, they would tell you they wish they had that when their kids were at those ages. It is really cool program, and you should be proud of it, and it should be something that they highlight. It's really cool. So, thanks. Whoever put that together, whoever's idea was, I know she put it, I talked to her. I mean, whoever's idea was to incorporate this into the school, that was a brilliant idea, really, really good, really cool.
Thank you, Mrs. Strabko.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions either, but I just congratulate you on the success of all of these programs. Every time I hear things... Every time I hear things, it's good stuff. And I think, listening to your presentation tonight, Mr. Hoon, and as you talk about the different staff members, I think something that's really evident and critical to the success of your programs is you care about kids personally. You're not just an administrator that's sort of dishing out what-to-do kind of stuff at an arm's distance. There's an involvement, and you know, you're in the trenches seeing what the kids are doing and how the program's going, and the caring about kids is a priceless part of the success, I think. So thank you all for caring about kids and the work that you do.
Thank you, Board. I had one follow-up. I wanted to echo what Mrs. Brat said about, what's amazing is, you know, you're a director, which, you know, that title doesn't always have individual attachment to children, and yet, Mr. Hoon knows these children, he knows their needs, he knows their parents. It's really unbelievable how much you've been able to lead, but still be, you know, your fingers feel on the ground, and you know these kids. But I also want to compliment the women that came tonight to support you. First, thank you for coming. But secondly, you know, the story behind the numbers in terms of decrease of out-of-district placement is really these ladies who are getting, and let's be honest, we're getting kicked on and hit and pinched and thrown up on, on really a routine basis, and yet, it's in your hearts to keep working and keep finding answers and keep finding ways to keep our kids in our classrooms. And without your leadership and your willingness to really get down to the early dirty, we wouldn't see the numbers that we see. So thank you for coming tonight, but also thank you for your passion and your willingness to, as I said, sometimes literally sacrifice immediately.
Once.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Dr. Smiley. Is that it for today?
It is. I could go through billing our teacher again.
No.
We're good.
You're good?
No, hour and a half was good, thank you. Communications, Mr. Carpus.
I do not have anything right now, no.
I do, a small thing.
Go for it.
Just mention, Mr. Ruda went down to an OSBA conference this weekend, and they present him, but they handed him a plaque that was presented to Karen Dendorf. And just want to let you know, I was just going to go on a wall of fame over here behind Mr. Nucio. And it's just, you know, Karen was like the epitome of what a board member should be. She was child-centered, and I think that's a quality that all are striving to have up here. I think I can speak for everybody on that one pretty safely and say that that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be children-centered, student-centered. And, Ms. Ruda, thank you for bringing this up. I'm going to make sure I get this to PM, if you can get this hung up on a wall, all right? So thank you for bringing that, and that's all I have for that communication.
Mr. Vaughn, did I just?
Oh, absolutely.
Add to that a bit, last spring at the regional conference for OSBA here, the head of the Northeast Region gave a really lovely tribute to Karen. This was, this award was decided upon before she passed away. I guess I just want to emphasize that it wasn't a matter of a posthumous decision, and they recognized, because she's been very active for many, many years, and they were recognizing her and had given a very lovely tribute to the schoolwork that she had done for three decades, over three decades. And so we're finally getting the plaque, just because we have made connections, but the award was actually given, decided upon for 2020 and announced in 2021. So they did a really nice job of appreciating her commitment to the school board work.
Thank you. Anybody else? Treasury, Mr. Nucio, you have something?
I have nothing on House 126. That's the bill that would not allow tailors property claims. It was passed by the Senate 24 to 7 probably a month ago, and we're back to House with the current, so the vote was supposed to be yesterday, but there was no vote taken. So it must, it must be getting a lot from students that's bad for us, and to pull off the vote quickly, they will prepare the changes that are going forward.
PK Council, please. They're waiting so patient.
Hello, I'm back. Heather Ketchy, Farm Council Officer, bringing from Farm Council PTA on Wednesday, December 3rd, Farm Council PTA host of his winter luncheon. Thank you for all the guests that were in attendance from central office, our buildings, and our PTA units. It was so nice to be in person and enjoy this special holiday event together. We are currently accepting nominations for our annual PTA and PTA Helping Hands Award and Special Education Advocate Award. The winners of these awards will be invited and honored at our spring installation dinner in April. Our scholarship program is underway, so seniors are now beginning to fill out their applications. On February 10th, I will be hosting a workshop here at Palmer Senior High at 6:30 PM to go over the ranking system and everything. Scholarship pickups will be February 23rd at Palmer Senior High in the afternoon. On February 9th, we will have our next council meeting, and it'll be at 9:45 at St. Paul's Church. That location has changed due to the fact that the library is not allowing use of their meeting rooms right now. So, we're just all over the district here. On Saturday, February 19th, Farm Council PTA will host the Family Health and Safety Fair from 9 to 11 a.m. at Palmer Senior High's cafeteria. We are very excited about this free family event that will include many community resources for our Palmer City Schools district families. Raffle basket sales for the scholarship will be online from February 1st through the 18th, and tickets will be purchased via the Cheddar link, and they are also going to be on sale at the Family Health and Safety Fair. The winners will be drawn at the end of the fair, and we look forward to hopefully seeing you there. On February 23rd, Farm Council PTA will host our annual Reflections and Calendar Artist Recognition Night that'll be held here at Palmer Senior High in the cafeteria. Invitations will be sent out to the students being recognized and their families. However, all district employees and schoolroom members are welcome to attend. We have had over 50 entries from Reflections that we've done, and we have an additional, about 40 members, 40 students of artwork that we completed. The unique thing about the calendar is we take pictures of artwork not only throughout the building, we come up here to the board office, get art teachers to submit it, so all of that work is from last year throughout the district. So it's really nice to see, so it's our kind of version of a traveling art show. We will be offering the Babysitting Train course, hopefully for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade this year, on March 5th and March 12th, from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. at Palmer Senior High cafeteria. So information will be delivered to all the middle schools and high schools upcoming. Lastly, then, we hope to see you at our February meeting. Please note that, again, the location has changed, and we'll see you at St. Paul's Church on York Road.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any amendments?
Are you going to amend that?
Yeah, we have to. So I move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-07, adoption amendments. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01-07. And that's going to be for which?
This one is Resolution 2022-01-01. Are you remanding the first reading of, or the technical policy, or is this part of it?
Just, no, it's not the technical policy, it's just we're removing, we're kicking the first reading back to committee.
Okay, we'll kick it back to committee, you have to put a date that you're bringing it back to the board.
So it would be? And then, the 24th, February 24th.
February 14th.
Okay, so then, Resolution 2022-01-21.
Yeah, because it's just the first reading.
It's just the first reading, because it's not a resolution. We don't think we have to amend anything. This is the first reading, we're just going to.
So we're just kicking it back, so I don't have to do the resolution then.
Yeah, right? We just have to make sure we focus on these.
All right, so there is no amendment.
Correct.
Or policy.
Correct.
So we're good then. So I retract that.
You are amending the agenda, is what she's saying.
Yeah.
The law is speaking over there.
They're amending the agenda, is what she's saying.
Okay, because amending the agenda is why the lady, you need to pass this because you're not having a first reading tonight on their board. So we aren't.
So we aren't, so I do have to read this. So I need to read it again, probably. Pretty good idea, huh? All right, so, let's try this again. We are doing, we are kicking back.
The first reading of all?
The first reading of policy, which is, doesn't have all first readings, right?
Right.
All right, so the first reading of policy. But I move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-07 to adopt that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01-07. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just clarifying that you will bring it back to the board on 24, the first reading after the next power meeting.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else? Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
The Resolution 2022-01-07 has been approved. Public participation at this point, do we have any, we have nothing for public address today's agenda? So, we move on to, I move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-08 to approval, I'm sorry, I lost my place, approval of the written recording of proceedings from December 16th regular to December 16th special meeting, January 6th, 2022 organizational, and January 10th, 2022 work section, board education meetings.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01-08. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-01-08 has been approved. Unfinished business, Mr. Price. I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-05-248, rescinding Resolution 2019-12-534, authorizing a real property tax exemption under the Revised Code Sections 507, excuse me, 5709.40 and 5709.41, in connection with the development of certain property in the city of Seven Hills, compensation agreement, and related matters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-05-248. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Can I make a comment? Absolutely. So, this was specific to the property, Rockside Road, the Fairland Properties, contracted to develop, they had a nice mixed-use development that they were planning, and they pulled out of the project, and subsequently, there is a new developer, new developer that is interested. So we are rescinding this, and we want to be very clear that we are certainly, continue to be open to a tip for the development of that property. But this tip itself is really irrelevant now because the developer's going to want to come in, and they have different stipulations and different considerations for their own development, and we would then work with that developer to develop a different tip. So I can't underscore enough that we recognize as a school district, and I believe I'm speaking for our board as well, what's good for our communities is good for Palmer City Schools as well. So this is not an end-up, this partnership, it's simply this specific piece of paper is not relevant. Anybody else?
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-05-248 has been approved.
This concludes unfinished business for finance business for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mrs. Brats, curriculum.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-09, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2021 through 2024 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01-09, granting authority to the administration to enter a contract with the family during the 2021 through 2024 school year. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-01-10. Did you want to note that that was adopted, that first resolution?
Didn't say that.
No.
No, I'm sorry. Thank you.
That's okay.
I think we made our.
There was a pause, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah. The Resolution 2022-01-09 has been approved.
Okay. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-01-10, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with kids' links for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second.
A motion and a second for Resolution 2022-01-10. Any questions or comments from the board?
I can comment on that. That's specific to a, what's considered an independent educational evaluation. This is not a program that's going to be used for all students or anything to that that's specific to one request for an independent evaluation of a student and a family.
Anybody else? Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Brats. Yes.
Mr. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-01-10 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2022-01-11, approval of the 2022-2023 school year calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution 2022-01-11. Any questions or comments from the board?
I would just like to thank whoever puts this calendar together every year, because I know it is a lot of work, but even just this physical one-page PDF, making sure that parents have this go-to document and that it looks consistent every year.
We will thank Melissa Emeco, who did a great job on this.
Thank you, Melissa. Anybody else? Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Brats. Yes.
Mr. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-01-11 has been approved.
I want some other board member, yes, something they wish to discuss about curriculum, this will come forward.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Brats, I appreciate that. On to you, Mr. Ruda, for business.
Yeah, I move to adopt Resolution 2201-12, authorizing elevator service agreement.
We have a motion and a second for.
Second.
Sorry.
We have a motion and a second for the adopt Resolution 2022-01-12. Any questions or comments from the board?
They would have awesome things to say for us.
Elevator service contracts, it's actually going to save a long road. So we appreciate Zachary Schneider's work and diligence in making sure that we're getting the best price for this service that is hopefully rare, but necessarily happens.
Very good, thank you. Roll call, Ms. Nucio.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-01-12 has been approved. Unless a board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude business for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
[inaudible]
And you have a lot of. [inaudible] Tremendously exciting. I don't.
For anybody who's not working, this was an exciting endeavor.
All right, let's move on. It's, Mr. Price, finance.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2022-01-13, approval of the December 2021 financial report.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-01- A motion and a second for, to adopt resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 13. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 13 has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 14, ratification of investments.
Second.
A motion and a second for resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 14. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 14 has been approved.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 15, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
A motion and a second for resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 15. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes. Resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 15 has been approved.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 16, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 16. Any questions or comments from the board? I can do this, this has been my tradition here for about four years. Thank you, everybody, for remembering the Farm City School District with your kind donation. Every little bit helps and goes way to our student body, and I'm sure they are very, very appreciative of your generosity. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
There's some very large monetary sums up there, too. Four thousand dollars, thousand dollars. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So, thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for the seat.
We gotta get back in practice.
Okay, so.
I know, right? All right, so, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 16 has been approved. Now, Mr. Price.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for the seat.
We gotta get back in practice. Legislation, Mrs. Carvis.
I do have one quick thing. Mr. Nucio already covered House Bill 176, but I wanted to read something that was written by Michelle Muman, the Ninth District Representative, on the Ohio State Board of Education, and it is in regards to the back pack bill. Just a little excerpt, and she writes that, "My fear is that if Ohio moves towards a private model, families will choose schools that are protected thought bubbles and leave public schools behind as a choice of last resort. Children could end up being in schools with only those like-minded in an effort to stay in a protected echo chamber without ample opportunity to be exposed to the robust diversity of our communities. Maybe that's very important as we move forward and talk about how legislation impacts, current legislation is going to impact our future society." Look, that concludes, sorry, that concludes legislation, not a company.
Can I just make a remark about legislation? We've done this at a lot of PTA lunch conferences, and, you know, when I was on the permanent council of PTAs as an officer, I had some events where I would invite local legislators in to talk about legislative issues that are important to schools. And I would always start off by saying, you know, a lot of people are intimidated by legislation. It's kind of overwhelming, and when you think of professional legislators, they have all staffs that work for them that do things. But if anything else, people need to have an appreciation for how legislation drives virtually everything. You know, especially in our school environment, we are told what to do so much by legislation. And it's not that you have to know everything about all these different things, because that is entirely overwhelming. But if you have a passion for something, if you have a particular interest in something, pursue that and learn about what you can about your particular area of interest, because legislation is what drives what's going to happen. So, I would encourage people to get more comfortable with legislation, meet their legislators, have a conversation if they can get to that comfort level, because it's really important in what we do, and at least an appreciation for how important it is. And this is, you know, this is our level of legislation, you know? What we do here, and people getting involved here is great as well, so.
And don't be afraid to bring it to the board. I know we have two folks in the audience tonight that were advocating for legislation or using legislation to reference something that we could do better at, and I think that that's, like, we're here to listen, and I think that that's a great thing when you can have a relationship with the community to come forward and bring things to you and build a better school district because of that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Robbs.
Now, this is a good list of instructions. Okay, all right, so, human resources, Mrs. Robbs.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move to adopt resolution 2022 01 17, approval of the following certificated exhibits: confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts, approval of certificated non-compensated leave of absence, confirmation of substitute future appointments, confirmation of substitute administrator appointments, acceptance of certificated resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, for adoption of resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 17. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 17 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022 01 18, approval of the following classified exhibits: confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, to adopt resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 18. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 18 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2022 01 19, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 19. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 19 has been approved. Like, these people are coming in the springtime, perhaps?
No.
Any retirements?
No. Well, yeah. We'll offer them the opportunity, but they haven't indicated that they want.
We want to have the call.
I agree, I think it always gives them a solid.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2022 01 20, creation of S5 secretary, interdepartmental curriculum instruction, and enrollment and recruitment position, and adoption of job description.
Second.
I mean, motion and a second for 2022 dash 01 dash 20. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that, that's okay.
Absolutely.
So, this is really a reaction to quite a backlog in registration over the last couple of years. We had parents that would register and then not even get called back for four or five days, and that's not acceptable to us. We recognize that, you know, parents enroll, and while we all wish they enrolled six months earlier, maybe that could, reality is that's not often the case, and we want to be able to start that child as close to the beginning of the school year as possible. So, this person will be dedicated to the registration, or enrollment and improvement office for approximately half of the year, but then there are also different uses that we will have, including PBLA, Farmer Universal Learning Academy has not had secretarial support, so this person should be able to lend themselves to that as well. But ultimately, this is about improving, you know, our family's experience, especially in the enrollment.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions? Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 20 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude human resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Robbs. Policy, Mrs. Carvis.
Yes, I move to adopt resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 21, approval of the technical policy changes to policy 0114, steel, last review date 4/14/2003. Policy 0121, authority, last review date 4/14/2003. Policy 2421, career and technical ed, last review date 10/7/2002. Policy 2330, homework, last review date 2/3/2002. Policy 3130, assignments and transfer, last review date 10/21/2002. Policy 3132, vacancies, last review date 10/21/2002. Policy 3441, use of district vehicle for school buses, last review date, school business, I apologize, thank you, last review date 1/25/2010. Policy 4441, use of district vehicle for school business, last school business, last review date 1/25/2010. Policy 5113, inter-district, inter-district open enrollment, last review date 6/15/1998. Policy 5113.01, inter-district open enrollment, last review date 12/16/2000.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 21. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just that these were all technical change reviews, and we are, there's no, nothing like, correct. Nothing, nothing, nothing happening over here.
Those subsequent changes, technical changes are.
Roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 21 has been approved.
And this is where we were going to do the first reading of these revised policies. These are the ones being returned to committee.
They were brought back on the 24th of February.
On the 24th of February. I do just want to point out, one of them was brought to our attention by a committee member, and so that's one of the things, they would like to use person-first language in our policies.
Yeah, we appreciate that, that, I appreciate you came to the meeting, and I appreciate the notes. Thank you so much.
And unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes policy 49.
Thank you, Mrs. Carvis. Let's see, brings us to the opportunity, we have questions ready to the record, and we have just the one. And I'll read this verbatim. This is from Jeanette Cooper-Gostavia.
Travasva.
Travasvia, sorry. You think I could read these names, teaching here in the system. So, your address is 2427 West Homer Street in Chicago, Illinois. Quite the distance to come and speak to us, I feel honored. There are several parents, I'm going to read the verbatim, there are several parents in the district who have asked me to speak on their behalf because they are afraid of repercussions to themselves and/or their children for voicing their concerns on the topic of psychosocial transition of students in the district and to the proposed Safe Act, House Bill 454. I have provided, I will provide a copy of my questions to be entered into the record at the meeting, which I have right here. So, good evening, thank you for allowing me to ask questions on the issue of gender identity in the Farm City School District. The topic is currently being discussed in the Ohio, in the Ohio House of Representatives. I'm here on behalf of parents of the district who have requested my aid because they wish to remain anonymous. Number one, as of this meeting, the Board of Education or superintendent received, received any information regarding the Safe Adolescence from the Farm and Safe Act while Ohio House Bill 454 currently in committee. Do you want to answer, do you want to, I'm going to do it.
Read it all.
Read it all? I can read it all? Yeah, yeah, okay. Number two, as of this meeting, is the board or superintendent aware of that this bill, if enacted into law, would require that no school personnel withhold from a minor's parent or legal guardian or encourage or forbids a minor to withhold from the minor's parent or legal guardian, the fact that the minor's perception of his or her gender is inconsistent with his or her sex? Three, as of this meeting, are current school board policies in compliance with the requirements of this bill, see copy of HV454? Four, do you have a copy of the book Irreversible Damage by Abigail Schreier in any school library in the district? Five, do you have any students within the district who identify as transgender and/or non-binary? Six, is that identification recorded in the student's permanent record and/or mental health record? If a licensed mental health care provider employed or by contract contracted with the district has received this information? Seven, do you have a district policy that requires school personnel to inform their parents and guardians when a student expresses to a school staff member that he or she identifies as transgender and gender or non-binary? Eight, do you keep record of communication between school personnel and parents and guardians regarding the student's identification with a gender that does not reflect his or her sex? I understand these questions will be provided by, provided by the next public school board meeting. Our answers will be provided by the next public, let me start this whole sentence over. I understand that the answers will be provided by the next public school board meeting. All questions can be answered by yes or no about disclosing personality and identify viable information of school personnel or students. I appreciate your time and service to the children and families. Thank you. Jeanette Cooper.
Can I say something really quickly?
You are right, Mrs. Vaughn. Absolutely, you made it, you got it, Mr. Vaughn.
I'm not going to answer everything, but for everyone in the room, House Bill 454, legislation aimed at banning affirming medical care, which is dangerous to our transgender and non-binary students. The ACLU has this bill listed as an anti-trans bill, defining that as prohibiting healthcare for our transgender youth. In addition to being detrimental to our students who identify as transgender or non-binary, it is in direct opposition of several laws in place to protect our youth who belong to the LGBTQIA+ community. I will remind everyone in this room that the Farm City School District honors the uniqueness of each individual and embraces diverse backgrounds, values, and points of view to build a strong inclusive community and to prepare students for lives in a multicultural society, which is our embrace and ambition statement.
Yeah, I appreciate you having to see and your questions, and I think that we have 48 hours to answer them. I will respond to you in about 48. Thank you.
Thanks for coming all the way from Chicago.
I've been to many school rooms in Chicago, have.
Have you? Thank you very much. Good, any others? No? I've got a session, so we're going to move on to, I move to adopt resolution 2022 dash 01 dash 23 to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt 2022 dash 01 dash 23, roll call, Mr. Nucio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Robbs.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.